For the town of Newcastle, today is May thirty first, twenty twenty three.
We have some extension tonight before we start a regular program. First extension is Yates, one thirty six Roaring Brook Road. Yeah, I'm looking for specific time, but. Why did you think that?
Tom, do you know anything about Yates? Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, why why didn't look at that?
They have to obtain a Westchester County sewer permit before they can go forward with their intended project and then dealing with the town engineer and all the moving authorities trying to do that. It may maybe sometime.
It may be some time before they get it?
Uh, yes, if I could recommend six months.
He's not asking for anything in particular. Normally, we give him six months. If somebody asks for something other, more or less. But I think with six months.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion. We grant this extension of uh six months.
A second.
Jeremy Ken Cooper.
Yay.
Tony Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzik.
Hi.
Another extension is Rodriguez, nineteen Heathcock Drive.
Full designers and civil engineers have not completed their work. Think six month, they're looking for.
We're not looking for anything in particular. Well, they want six months.
Yes, I think so.
So I'll make a motion to grant a six month extension on this one.
A second.
Jeremy Ken Cooper.
Hi.
Tony Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzik.
Hi.
Another extension, uh, Abbott, three fifty Roaring Brook, Bedford Road.
Structural design and residential fire sprinkler design are needed to be completed.
Again, they're not asking for any particular time, so I think we should just grant, uh, make a motion to grant a six month extension. Let's see where it goes from there.
A second.
Jeremy Ken Cooper.
Hi.
Tony Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzik.
Hi.
One more extension, uh, Cricka, seventy six Endon Down Drive. They're looking for the maximum time permitted by your board. Well, we don't have minimums, maximums. They haven't got a building yet. They haven't got a start date yet. Again, I would recommend six months and then we'll see what happens after that. I'll make a motion to grant this one a six month extension.
A second.
Jeremy Ken Cooper.
Hi.
Tony Giardina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Jenzik.
Bye.
This case is a carryover from our last meeting. Um, you're gonna excuse me when I mispronounce his name, but it's Bizier Yen, thirty nine Red Oak Lane. Can you help me with the pronunciation? Can I mess it up last month too?
It's my client. It's Ukrainian. I say Bizier.
Bizier. I'm 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 probably I'm probably forget that a few years ago.
I just break it into two.
Okay.
Get to start.
Start, please.
Okay, so this is a carryover from the last meeting. Our initial proposal was for a patio that required a rear and side variance, six hundred square feet. In attendance is a rear neighbor who at the last meeting complained about water runoff from the property. And we received another letter about water runoff of the property. At the time I was hired, my owner, my client, um, bought this new construction the end of last summer. Legal C O O approved construction. They moved in. I think they removed a single tree from the street line. Everything else is as is. We have always intended to, you know, be a good neighbor, deal with water runoff issues and stuff, but my owner never heard about any of this to the best of my knowledge until it was brought up in conjunction with this proposal. I spoke with my client and told them that although the patio violated no coverage laws or anything like that, it would be wise potentially to revise the patio to be a permeable deck. So I've submitted, um, prior to this meeting, I think two or three weeks ago, a proposal for a permeable deck, which is now on the floor. This deck is smaller and no longer requires side variance, which requires the same rear variance. The main difference being that the water on the deck surface will run down below to undisturbed ground and therefore there will be absolutely no change to the absorptive ground of the property. So our intention is that the proposal be judged on that basis, which is basically that we're asking for a rear variance of, you know, I think it's fifteen feet because the house is built right on the rear side of that center. That's a, the change, just if you're curious, uh, the patio had been six hundred square feet. It was reduced in size on the side. It's really just to get out of a side door. And the bulk of these two thirds of the pa- of the deck now is in the rear. And the change is now five hundred and seven square feet, so it's just under a hundred square feet.
So am I correct? You have no knowledge
Recording in progress.
or understanding of any disturbance to the the property, the vegetation, plantings, any anything that may have occurred in that respect, even though it may be prior to your client's taking ownership of the property?
Well, no, I have heard a story about, uh, you know, changes that occurred when that construction happened. But it it's all compliant. You know, we're talking about removal of landscaping or something. It's not like it was bricked up or anything. And there's no requirement in terms of absorptive landscaping. There is a requirement for minimum number of trees and that and the property complies with them.
But you've seen the the pictures that the neighbor has has.
I I didn't see them directly. I, you know, I was here when you were looking at them, you know, and I believe me, I I I wish that everybody had sort of gone back and just talked to each other. That's what I might have done in this case. I don't know, I'm not a meteorologist. I don't know if those were normal rain conditions, heavy rain conditions. And I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I also know that the rear property slopes more significantly than ours towards their house. So the property itself appears to me to be, you know, problematic in terms of runoff. My client has also said when he started hearing about these complaints that he receives a a great amount of runoff under certain conditions from across the red from other properties and things. So it it is a quarter acre of neighborhood.
And as far as you know, your your client hasn't had any conversations with the neighbor in the.
Not to the, I mean, I would like to know if they have, but to the best of my knowledge, they, you know, they have an obligation to tell me anything they know, and they said no, and I'd ever spoken to them.
So attending this evening, uh, we have Mr. Seoli, um, town engineer. Mr. Seoli, do you want to give us your assessment of the circumstances, the situation here?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, I have reviewed the plans that have been submitted, uh, the latest plans by the applicant's architect. And based on the coverage application worksheet, uh, the area of new new coverage is approximately five hundred and seven square feet. Based on chapter one oh eight A, which is the stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control, which I go by all the time to use as my guide on whether or not anything needs any additional post-stormwater construction management. Based on chapter one oh eight A, any land development activities disturbing within one or more acres or creating greater than one thousand square feet of new impervious would require stormwater. However, in this particular application, the land disturbance is less than a thousand, uh, less than an acre and the new impervious is less than a thousand square feet. So therefore, by code, the stormwater pollution prevention plan is not required in this particular case. And also too, the decking that they have substituted for the patio, the way it's constructed, the gapping and the flanking, which is only one by four tracks. The gapping is usually between one eighth inch and quarter inch. That will let the rainwater drain freely through the decking and infiltrate into the ground. So if there were to be any type of runoff associated with downstream neighbors, it would be the minimum at best. And that's my assessment of the situation.
Okay, thank you. I take it you'd like to be heard this evening on this matter again?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Josh Kimerling from Cuddy and Fader. Uh, thank you for, uh, taking the time to listen to us. I wasn't here last time. Uh, I did view the, um, the recording of it. And, um, I I think the willingness that I heard then from the applicant and the applicant's architect seems to have changed somewhat. Um, and I'll I'll get to that. I'm not sure why. But I represent Su Chin Chin. She's been a twenty year resident of this town. She's a good neighbor. And what has happened is devastating to her. This is her home. This is her financial nest egg. For twenty years, there was no problem. There was no water issue. There was no saturation of her lawn from the applicant property. There was certainly no flooding into her basement. As you heard, I think, last time, there have been multiple events since the construction in two thousand, uh, September two thousand twenty one, October two thousand twenty one, May of two thousand twenty two, July of two thousand twenty two, and as recently as April of of this year, just before, a couple of days before the last hearing. I think this board has the discretion and, um, from what I've heard and, um, the willingness and recognition of a serious problem, uh, the ability to, um, and we're not opposed per se to a deck. The willingness to, um, have some minimal conditions that will, um, ameliorate this problem. The, I just want to show a few pictures because for accuracy and the record, I think it's important. I'm handing up a picture from June of two thousand. I have three copies. I'm sorry, I don't have four.
No, I'm sure.
So there's been massive changes to the landscape. And you can see that is taken from my client's back porch looking to the applicant's property. There was substantial vegetation between the properties. No fence, substantial vegetation.
But I'm sorry, this is a before picture, right?
Before the new construction, correct. And, um, I'm not sure if I have a picture now, but there's no vegetation now, totally removed. That's the new construction with the fence there, but all vegetation has been removed. The, um, town engineers, I recognize the, um, position regarding the stormwater, uh, regulations. I understand the size of what we're dealing with here. I understand the applicant, um, modified from a patio to a deck. But regardless of whether it's a deck or not, the continued problems will exist. And I just want to show you as laid as.
So is the is the assertion that you're making that the removal of the plantings and the replacement of the plantings with the fence has created this circumstance?
I I think that may be some of it. I also think there is water being channeled and diverted, um, to the back of the property. I mean, it's it's clear. I'll show you multiple pictures from April of two thousand twenty three. The first two pages, um, show the basement flooding. The third and fourth pages show my client's backyard, um, flooding. And the fifth and sixth show the boundary on the applicant's property with substantial pooling there from the direction of water to the backyard, which had never occurred. There had been, and I think, uh, either the, uh, end town engineer or maybe the building inspector, in two thousand and two, there was, uh, two, an above ground pipe.
Yeah.
That directly channeled, and you can see it here, it was above ground, um, diverting the water unnaturally to the back of the property. That pipe is not above ground at this point. I'm not certain whether it's below ground.
I'm sorry, is there a pipe on here that we're supposed to.
Yeah, the green right before the rocks, you can see there's a pipe here.
Okay.
That is, and and in the rain, storm, all the water is concentrated and flows significantly to that area. As I said, when I listened to the board meeting, uh, last, um, month, it was hopeful that a solution could be worked out because I forget which, uh, chairman of the board, um, which member said it, but, and I took it down. I think what the board is going to ask, and we will continue this matter, we ask you, this is to the architect. We ask you to go back and consult with your client and come up with a plan that addresses these issues. I would encourage you to discuss them with the neighbor so that they have some comfort level that this is being addressed. Architect said absolutely. I reached out to, uh, the neighbors, um, the neighbor directly. And then I spoke with the neighbor's attorney, um, a couple of days before Memorial Day. We had an email exchange where I said, um, uh, he should or his client should come up with some, um, remediation, some method to, uh, address the stormwater runoff here because this is the problem. And, um, the attorney was open to it. He thanked me for my suggestions. I put out some ideas of whether additional planting, whether a berm, whether some, um, redirection of the water not directly to the back. Um, he sounded receptive to it. And, um, uh, I think also the architect had made similar commentary at the last meeting about solutions to this problem that could be put in place.
Is there anyone who has sort of concrete ideas as to what the solution might be? I I've I've heard what you've said about, could it be plantings? Could it be a berm? Does anyone actually know what it is that might make the difference here?
I would hope that the applicant could have its engineer, um, come up with some solution, um, to this as part of the process here. And I would hope we can continue this. Given the holiday weekend, the attorney for the applicant just got back to me last night when I had emailed him. So we really haven't had a time to further develop that. But, um, the hope is, yes, that there is a solution that isn't, um, exponentially costly here, that can be put in place, that can restore the situation to what it had been for two decades. Because any any rain event of a moderately substantial quantity is is a horrific event for this family and we hope that.
So in in your estimation, uh, the attorney for the applicant intends to speak to his client about coming up with some solution?
I believe so. The response to my suggestions was, thank you, these seem, something to the effect that these seem like good ideas, reasonable ideas, yes, not, um, uh, an objection to my concepts of
Okay.
trying to work it out as part of this.
Is is there anyone who you haven't heard from yet who has something to add to this discussion? Yes.
Uh, I have something to add.
I'm sorry, could you just introduce yourself again?
My name is Su Chin Chang. I live in twenty seven Pine Hill Row.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, I want to comment, uh, architect. He said, uh, my neighbor never noticed the the issue. However, I did tell them. The first day they move in to that place because I know that there will be the issue. And I do, I do not want them have the issue. I told my neighbor, the new neighbor, I told you issue that your lawyer know that there's a flooding issue caused by the construction. I did tell them. I just want to add it and but they they told me the, uh, they don't care. It's not their problem. So.
Thank you. Just to be clear, um, under the prior ownership of the house, you you did not experience any water infiltration into your home?
I never.
You never did.
I have been with the John, uh, the the, actually not previous, the previous previous owner who is ninety four years old and I I told him I wish he would be the neighbor all the time because he always take care of the the hedges and I was very pleased to have him. But unfortunately, his wife died during the pandemic, the first twenty twenty. And he told me that he could not, uh, stay alone. That's why he sold the house.
Okay.
Yeah, and I also want to show the picture. This is the the from the picture. This is the before, the, uh, John had the house and the new one underneath.
I'm sorry, the top picture is is what?
The old house, the old house.
The old house, okay.
Yeah, before construction.
Okay.
And the bottom is the new house. So they they even, uh, I also want to add it. Last year after I talked to the builder and the town engineer and builder say, okay, we'll build the more, uh, trench, they did.
No.
But the new owner cut it off. They remove all the tree. And even the front, uh, before was there, they remove all the tree except the one next to me because that's just on the border.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I want to add.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I can respond?
Yes, please come forward.
Just want to respond to some of these statements. Just to clarify, it's not the change in the owner of this property that instigated a problem. It was the redevelopment, apparently, of the property. So let's not get personal and start talking about who doesn't want to cooperate with whom. Also, on that point, my client, the new owner, did not remove all of that vegetation, which may or may not cause, started to cause this problem. I don't know if it was a grading problem or vegetation problem. It was the contractor who removed that and my client simply purchased that property as is. Like I said, they removed a a tree at the at the front of the lot, you know, right along the street line. To speak to the attorney's point real quickly, there's really a jack there really is no change to my willingness to participate and have my client participate as a good neighbor, uh, and to come up with a solution. The distinction I want to make here is that the proposal itself is not germane to this problem. It doesn't aggregate the problem and it doesn't solve the problem, but it's, that's not really the forum for this. So I feel like we're in an apples and oranges situation where there is nothing wrong with the proposal. In fact, it just, it doesn't make anything worse. And really, this is just about, you know, coming up with a landscaping scheme that may help this problem of, you know, absorptive area, bushes, things along the fence. But unless I'm mistaken, I don't see how that can be held against the approval of the proposal. It seems to me more of a civil neighbor between, in, uh, issue between two neighbors.
Okay, we, um, I I think, um, in spite of what you said, it's it's difficult to bifurcate, um, these issues. I understand you have an application and the application on its, you know, could stand on its merits, but we are trying to, um, resolve the situation at the same time to, um, so that, uh, this doesn't perpetuate itself. I I can't imagine how that would be good, uh, if we weren't in that situation, if we didn't attempt to do something about it. I can't see how that would be good for, uh, these two people living side by side with each other.
No, I agree. So, I mean, do you have the jurisdiction to say plant bushes and flowers along the fence?
No, we we're, I I mean, under certain circumstances, yes, but as it relates here, I think what we're going to do, um, unless there's someone else who we haven't heard from, uh, is okay, um, what we're what we're going to do is hold this matter over in hopes that you, your client and the client's attorney can put your heads together and come back to us with a a solution to this particular issue. I don't think there's any more work that you need to do as it relates to your application. But, uh, we would like to advance this other issue, um, to.
What about the variance issue itself? I mean, ultimately that, originally that is why we're here. Is there an objection to that?
Yeah, no, no question about it. Um, I I'm not going to speak for the the rest of the board, but, you know, I don't, the fact that you've now moved it off of the ground, you know, um, you know, probably makes it, um, acceptable, um, to most members. Let me hear from, um, whomever else it is who wants to be heard.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Claire.
Hi, Claire.
Um, I also live in twenty seven Pine Hill Row. So I would actually argue that, um, despite the new plan to construct a wood deck, we're saying this is what, six hundred feet? This means six hundred square feet of removal of grass, which also, um, contributes to the absorption. If we're saying vegetation contributes to absorption of groundwater. So if we're talking about, uh, an already very severe situation, and I will show you, we again had an issue of flooding on April thirtieth.
So just on on a couple of points. Number one, I I think we've gone from six hundred to five hundred square feet.
Okay. Sure.
I'm not sure that's the biggest issue in the world. And, um, so I'm I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
So that that's fair. This is April thirtieth through May first, um, when we had a moderate amount of rain.
Right. The the other, I'm sorry, the other point, um, I think was, I I don't know what, if anything, is going to grow under that and whether or not, um, the intention is that it be grass or or some other material. I don't think we we have that information to know that.
Well, the the set says undisturbed, you know, if it needs a weed mat or whatever, it's you know, I understand what you're saying. In fact, because it's not accurate. You know, the the ground under that deck will absorb as much water as it did when there was no deck above it.
I think your point is that if, because of the deck, because of the shadows, because of the the darkness, um, that might be there, whatever, um, grass or or, um, whatever else might be there, uh, dies away and it becomes just plain dirt. Might there be more runoff that it might cause? And and I don't know the answer to that, so I'm I'm not here to opine on that, but I I think that's, um, the young lady's, um, comment.
Yeah.
Yes, um, thank you. Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So I, just for everybody's benefit, I think we we understand the issues. So I would just ask, we don't have to hear the same refrain. Um, we certainly want to hear.
You're telling me not to say what I want I want to say? I'm the next door neighbor. My name is Doug Helmuth.
I I'm sorry. Um, no, I'm not telling you what to say or not.
Telling me not to say what I want to say. Cut it short because you already heard it.
No, I didn't. I didn't say cut it short.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. So you you live where now?
I'm the next door neighbor. I live on the side of the, I'm the next door neighbor to the new house. I live on the side. I live on the side of the house where the construction's planning to be done, okay? I'd like to show some pictures. This is in front of my garage a day after it rains. I get a puddle in front of the garage, I get a puddle in the backyard. This is the side of the house with the bushes and, thank God, a tree line before the fence went up. This is the house after they ripped out all the bushes. I have a tree line. I had Mr. Tom come out after they did that, because I was concerned about the trees as well. I live on a hill and it's a quarter acre lot. My driveway's right there, and you saw the water runoff already. Most of that, to be totally honest, most of that comes from my driveway, okay? Probably most of it does not come from this house, okay? But I do get water and I do not want to get a lot more, okay? Here is the picture.
Uh, I'm sorry, sir. So I I didn't understand the point you were trying to make. So it, the water comes from your driveway, not from the house next door?
I was having water come down my driveway before construction occurred at all. I would get some water in my driveway.
Okay.
Whether there's a little bit more water in my driveway now or not, I don't know.
Right.
Okay, but to be honest, I was getting water there.
Okay.
That is the house with the fence, okay? You'll you'll notice this is my bedroom windows, which are over the garage. This is a double glass sliding door on the end of the house. Does that look like a good feature to you? Why isn't this double glass sliding door on the back of the house? It's not a very good design feature. They have a dining room table that's right near this, uh, door, okay? Very poor design feature. Now I'm gonna go through the list of items that I wrote down here. Our house is a raised ranch with a side entry garage. My two major concerns are water and privacy. It's a hill. You can see the picture there. You can see how close that is to my bedroom windows. The new house slopes down on both sides. It slopes down in the back more severely than it slopes down on the side. On my side is a more gradual slope, and like I said, I have trees there. Uh, I'll I'll bring it up now. When the bushes were taken out, I immediately called up the inspector Tom to come and take a look at it. Tom looked at the tree line, and I said, Tom, what's gonna happen here? I don't want, I don't, there was no fence. Fence wasn't built yet. I don't want a fence. I said, I don't want a fence. They said, well, they have a permit to put up a fence on the property line. But I said, I don't see how they can do that. There are trees that are on the property line. They're on my side. One tree's on both sides of the property line. There's several trees basically on the property line. I said, I don't want those trees taken down, okay? I, uh, was arguing when the bushes came out with the builder on why he was doing this. There was no notification. They just came and ripped everything, all the bushes out. Then they went after her bushes, okay? Okay, so the inspector was fully aware there was there was a problem. There's an issue that should have, there should have been some concern there when this was brought up, okay? As far as I'm concerned, there was no assessment, there was no inspection. Nothing was done to foresee any of these circumstances before they happened. So there's a big problem here.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir. So I I do believe from what I understand that, um, building permits were obtained and the, um, builder, um, built in compliance with our town's local laws. I I I understand your points, um, but
You've got a basement flooding.
No.
Why was there no inspection or review of the property, the grading of the property? Was the grading, what happened with the bushes was, after they finished with my bushes, they went over and they basically ripped out a thick line of hedges that were all across the back of the property.
Right.
Okay, once they did that, they took the dirt and they basically took their tractor and just rolled back and forth over the back of the yard, flattening it all out. So the grading in in that area was a specific design to probably capture all the water overflow and and stop any problem. But after they got through with these bushes and flattened everything out, they just, they just created a situation where all the water just cascaded down the hill right towards her house. So and it should also be noted, this architect has nothing to do with that problem, okay? And the owner, current owner of the house, has nothing to do with this problem. What, where's where's, uh, where's the previous owner and his builders? Can they be brought in on this and be held liable for what they did?
Well, did they do anything that was, I'm not defending them, but did they do anything that was noncompliant? I I understand it hasn't worked out, but that's a separate
I I'm not a lawyer and I'm not, uh, you know, I I I've lived in this house six years, so I I don't know all these
In your particular case, what can be done after the fact to prevent the infiltration of of water onto your property beyond the water that you've already explained to us that you have from time to time?
I just don't want them to, well, they keep saying there's only a small portion of deck being built on the side of the house. Currently, half the deck is being built on the side of the house towards my property. Half of the five hundred foot deck, there's two hundred and fifty square feet. If you look very closely at your diagram, you'll notice that half of that deck is protruding past the house. I consider that a side deck, not a back deck.
Mathematically, that's not accurate. I have the plan right now.
It's on the side. It's closer to my house, half of the deck. There's gonna be water runoff. My suggestion there is, he's also got, they've also got a gutter system, is that correct? That comes off the roof. You have a gutter that comes down there. What's your plan for that? I I didn't hear anything about that.
Uh, sir, so, and with respect
There, okay, there's a gutter that comes down. I'm also concerned about that. I'm concerned of water runoff. I'm concerned about, now there's a deck that's raised up, there's less grass, so there's all these issues that arise now because there's a side deck. And the water runoff should be channeled towards the back corner of the house, which puts it in between houses and prevents any further problems from arising.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
It's okay, take your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, just mention that. Yeah, I, when when the architect was here last month, he mentioned how he reviewed the plans and everything, and he mentioned three benefits to a patio. He said that because of the sightlines, because of the scale of the lot, and because if they had a deck, it would overlook the fence. So the whole purpose of the fence is to provide you privacy. Now, if you're building a deck that's almost at the first floor level, now you've just defeated the whole purpose of the fence you just put up. So I don't understand why they don't stay with the patio concept, which would provide me possibly a bit more privacy. So that that's what I was coming up with when I saw this new design for a deck. I just don't want, who knows gonna live in this house? Who who knows what's gonna go on here, what's gonna go on here in the future if the house is ever sold to someone else? There's another warning I'll give you guys. There's lots of lots of water issues in this area, okay? This this previous owner who just sold this house, he owns the next lot. What's he gonna do there? Is he gonna do another development and do the same thing and now flood out some other neighbors? The neighbor behind that lot, already I walk by there all the time. I see gutters coming out of their backyard and shooting out into their driveway. So they may have a water issue in their driveway already, and that water's coming off there. I I think the town needs to put together a team to go out there with the, uh, gentleman over here in the Zoom meeting, and he and he with the inspector and whoever else needs to go out there and do a serious assessment on this general area to see how they can handle water runoff. There's not, in this area, there hasn't been very much done at all to handle water runoff. There's no curbs on the side of the road. There's no channeling of water down the street on this road. So there's a lot of water runoff and nothing's being done to channel the water down the street or into a system to relieve these houses of the water that's coming onto their properties.
Okay. Have we covered your points?
For the most part, but how 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 responsible is the previous owner and the builders who basically caused the problem by ripping out those hedges? Can the town do anything to create an assessment of what happened here? What caused the problem with the water runoff? Can you write up an assessment and provide it to Sue's family? Can you come up with some type of assessment identifying what caused the problem? Was the grading, has that ever been looked, has it been looked into? Did the grading change on this property? The grading, you should know that. Did the grading change based on the changes that were made to this property?
When you say you should know that, just so you know, this is, this is
Just like Mr. Giordino said last month, I asked the same question.
And and what did he say?
Did the grading change on his property?
Well, he asked the question, okay.
We should know that. That's exactly what he said.
Meaning, someone should provide that information to us.
No, you should know that information right now. You should, you should, you should be
Well, we would only, we would only know it if someone came forward with that information. Remember,
It's information you should know from what the builder did.
You deal with Just, I'm sorry, just one second. This is a zoning board, right? So we're dealing with variances. So how the slope changed and what its impacts are, play a role as it relates to zoning. Not as it relates to the buildability of the lot or what was constructed, because all of that was done, and I'm not defending anyone, but that was done in compliance with the town's regulations. So we have limited jurisdiction here as it relates to it. I've heard your points and and we are going to take them into consideration as we move forward. Do you have anything else you want to tell us this evening?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you for your time. Is there anyone else we haven't heard from?
One second. I wanna just respond about my statement last meeting about the grade change. I asked that question because I wanted to be sure that if there were grade changes, they were in compliance with the code and with the engineering department. Uh, and if they are, we we, like Chairman said, we don't have jurisdiction over that. If they did something that was not in compliance with the engineering department's, uh, requirements or specifications or in the building, uh, department's, uh, requirements, then certainly they would be, I, in my opinion, they would be responsible for that if it were done in 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 violation of whatever rules and regulations the building department or the engineering department has. We are not the building department, we are not the engineering department.
Okay, you asked that question.
So if that question was asked, and that, as far as I know, it has not yet been answered.
Okay.
So when it gets answered, we will be able to make a decision from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
And that was going to be one of my follow-ups with our previous conversation. I was going to ask our building inspector if in fact the 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 builder that did all the work did everything in compliance with what was necessary, or if he has done something that is not in compliance and is maybe liable to rectify it. We don't know that. As a zoning board, as as our chairman said, we we are a zoning board, we're not a building department, we're not an engineering department, we are not builders or engineers. But we, if we can get that information from those that have the the ability to give that information, we will be able to make it a better decision in the end result. So that's what I'm asking tonight again for clarification on the grading of that property, whether it was graded properly or improperly.
It's been a month. When are you gonna do it?
I don't do it.
If if I may step in
I ask it.
It's been a month. When are you gonna do it?
Okay, we heard your question. Thank you.
If I may step in, I just wanted to
I think you're asking a wrong person. What is the
The public comment is, for the sake of making public comment, um, respectfully, Mr. Helm, um, you know, as the board said, they've heard your comments and they will take them into consideration, but public comment period is typically not for a dialogue. It's not a back and forth. There's no, it's not for a debate. Public comments are made, they're noted, and and the board will take that into consideration in making their decision, whichever way that goes.
Sir, you want to be heard?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, my name is, uh, Chen Kunqiao. I live, uh, right on the same street, uh, Pyeongchang. And I actually, you know, I work the community every morning and evening. I in include that, you know, in front of their, you know, their house, that's a semish park, you know, small nice park there. So I knew, uh, pretty much everything. I knew them for twenty years. I've been into their house many times. I saw the house, you know, being knocked down, you know, built up, you know, each time, okay? I'd say I I I knew everything in the community, okay? Everybody knew me, you know, over there. I was the winner of the queue, you know, while I work in, you know. So I I can put that, you know, the house, I've been in there many times. When they're away, I'm the one watch their house. There's no fine issue at all. I'm just, I'm I'm not talking about technical side there. I'm talking more of the humanity side, you know, uh, you know, for, as a friend, as a neighbor there. It's a nicer community there. Everybody, everybody knows everybody, you know, and it's a nice company. The only thing, my point I'm trying to make is that, you know, you you have the new neighbor there, regardless of, you know, technical side there, low side there, this is always a humanity side there. We're gonna make the good neighbor for there, you know? So if they suffer there, somebody could do something. I don't know who, but somebody gotta do something at one point there, you know, solve their problem. It shouldn't be, my happiness is is, you know, your sadness, you know, that's my part.
Okay, thank you for your comments. So is there anybody who wants to say anything before we move this forward?
No, I just have one comment.
Okay.
I mean, again, we're we're sort of back to the good landscaping party to see if this solves everything. Like, again, I just wanna clarify
See, I I I just wanna be clear on this. We don't know a thing about landscaping. We don't know that landscaping is the solution here. We've heard about things that have been removed. I don't know if that's the root cause of this or not.
That's right. That's right.
I'm about, as soon as you finish, we're gonna hold this over to next month and hope that everybody gets together and comes up with a solution and informs the board of it. Go ahead, please.
My my only question is again about jurisdiction, that this can be tagged into the proposal and the proposal could be held up because of runoff issues that seem to have occurred when the builder built that house. So.
So again, this application, and and I'll, and and I have to be honest, I'm just speaking for myself now. The, now the issue, uh, you know, a secondary issue has come up about privacy. Um, and, uh, the the deck now and and, um, it's it's apparent intrusion into a a neighbor's, um, privacy, um, results in some level of concern for me. Now, whether that's overriding, whether or not something should be done about that, I don't know. But
Yes.
We are, we are going to hold this over to to next month.
Right.
So could you tell, could you tell me what you wanna say because
I'm just
I I wanna move this forward.
I just feel like the proposal itself, which is completely compliant, the engineer stuff to it, is
Well, you're here because you need a variance, okay? So
We need a permit. If we could continue, you know, if there was any problem with the
Well, you need a variance. You're not gonna get a permit until you get a variance.
No, I understand that. I give me an endgame.
Right, so And and we are not gonna deal with this issue anymore this evening. We're gonna hold it over, respectfully, I say that, okay?
And and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may step in as well, uh, I'm sorry, your name, I forget your name.
Yeah.
Adam.
Adam, um, you mentioned earlier about a, you know, maybe a condition for landscaping and things like that, right? That's something that we on the legal side would want to look into, exactly what kind of conditions can be, you know, that can come with a variance. So that's also why it it is a good So that's also why it it is a good idea to adjourn one more month so that we make sure everything is nice, tidy, done the right way from the beginning. Whether or not there's landscaping, like you said, I'm not a landscaper. Um, but there's also a legal aspect to this, that we want to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Um, understanding that there was flooding that's not associated with the variance, so a- as Mr. Chair you mentioned, sort of have to bifurcate the two, inasmuch as there's flooding prior to the variance and then whether or not the variance affects the flooding. There's a lot of information that has come in with this new submission. Um, there's a lot of public comment to consider, there's a lot of, there's a couple of legal questions to consider as well, like I said, about the condition. So, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that point before, because that was a very valid point. I just, right now, I need to look into it a little further, because we don't, we don't want to impose a condition that's not legally valid, of course, if there is a condition to come. So I just wanted to acknowledge that point, very good point, um, and and it did not fall on deaf ears. I hear you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to, um, keep the public hearing open, carry this over, uh, make a motion to, um, carry this over to the next meeting.
One second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
See everyone next month. Thank you.
Good night, Mr. Chairman.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that all. Good night.
Next is, uh, Gross. Three fifty-five Proton Dam Road.
Hello.
I'm sorry, this.
Good evening, my.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. Forgot.
Well said.
My fault, yes.
Um, good evening. Um, my name is David Coffin. I'm the architect representing the owner of the property, Stephen Gross. And the application before you is a variance, a setback variance for the installation of a generator and an underground propane tank. And I'm sure that you've been able to look at the site plan that was prepared showing the location of the underground tank as well as the location of the of the generator. The generator is located in this location because it is the best location. A new electrical service is being installed and it comes from overhead on the other side of the road over to the existing garage. And it makes sense, of course, to have the generator, the backup generator, right close to that, uh, the new main panel. As far as the the location of the underground tank, there were other locations that were considered, but this is the best one simply because it 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 minimizes any disturbance, let's say, to a driveway. Also, it is the farthest point away from the main road, in Proton Dam, which is a road. And also maintains a distance from a brook that goes through the property. The property itself is actually along with the garage, is actually non-conforming. I think if you take a look at the site plan, you'll notice that a portion of the house is also within that side yard setback. Due to the topography of the of the site, again, this is the best location. It's relatively flat. From the main highway or Proton Dam Road, it slows down toward the garage. And it is very well shielded, or the generator will be well, uh, shielded by the garage as well as some vegetation, trees, and and also some rock outcroppings that are along the road. So, um, pretty much that is it. I'm open to any questions you may have.
Where is the closest neighbor?
Uh, I don't know the exact location or how far away, but, quite honestly, if you're standing at the driveway, I can't see any any homes. It is a highly mutated area. And then on the other side, on the driveway side, is a property which is owned, I believe, by by the town.
Okay.
What's interesting is the way that this property was developed. There's over seven acres of property and yet everything was developed in in one corner. Uh, there was a comment, the environmental coordinator went out and visited the site and as far as he was concerned, everything was fine relative to it not being a wetland, even though it's right next to the brook. But you did note that there was some water and recommended to the building inspector to make sure that the tank was tied down when it is buried, and that's something we're gonna be doing.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? No. Is there anyone on the phone? Or video? Okay, thank you.
Tom, one question on the on the tank.
Yes.
Do we need to, um, be concerned about the setback of the tank? Because I'm hearing the denial letter, I think it's just for the generator.
Mr. Giordino, propane tanks are regulated by the NFPA fifty-eight code and they do not require variances.
That's what I thought.
There's a minimum setback from a property, a building, and a source of combustion, which they do need.
Okay. Got that in the record.
Any comments?
One.
I move that we close the public hearing.
One second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the gro- uh, gross application for the installation of a generator and associated propane tank requiring a front yard setback, a front yard variance of twenty-five feet and a side yard of five feet could be proof of the following reasons. The applicant has been thoughtful in his placement of generator. The site is, um, non-conforming. At this time, um, there will be no change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variances are not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on physical environment. The alleged difficulty is not self-created. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete the installation. There are also no neighbors who spoke an opposition. For these reasons, I think we should approve.
One second.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jensen.
Aye.
Thank you. Have your variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bamford, thirty-one Ridgewood Terrace.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Testa. I'm here today with Chris Bamford, the owner of the property, and I'm here to try to negotiate or through the zoning process. Just a little history. Christine entered into contract to buy the property of thirty-one Ridgewood Terrace in Chappaquaia here, which is a corner lot back in January of twenty-three. The previous owners, uh, requested what they call a letter of no violations from the building department and received what they call a, I guess a title search that said there was no violations of revenue. Based on that, um, we went to the site to take a look at it, Christine and I, and we saw there was a deck, there were some patio improvements. And as a result of that, we asked Tom to stop down to to the site to walk through with us. In that meeting, uh, obviously there was a series of issues that were raised by Tom that we needed to address. One was the issue of the conversion of the garage, uh, into finished space. The other was a wooden deck to the rear and also some onsite patios, walkways, and two sheds. As a result of that, it was requested we get an updated survey, which we hired Thomas Merritt to do that updated survey, which is in your packet. And as a result, he also requested an updated plan of the property there in terms of the garage and the improvements, which was done and also included. Throughout the process, the existing owners, once they were aware of this, basically refused to help out at all in any fashion. They basically felt they had a letter that said there was no issues and they based it on that. And we were forced to enter into a closing, which was already set up with the mortgage company, et cetera, on Bamford. And as a result, we wound up having to close it in as-is circumstance. She closed in March of this year. And basically, as a result of that, we immediately contacted the building department to understand the process of going through the zoning board in an attempt to get variances so that she could, um, do what she needed to do there. The the purpose of the application tonight is, um, to vote to legalize certain improvements that were done to the structure and also to utilize the existing detached garage as a artist's studio. A little history, the the main building was built in nineteen-ten, is pre-existing, non-compliant with regards to the, all of the setbacks, et cetera, as well as the garage, which was built, uh, in, excuse me, the house was built in eighteen-ninety, which is pre-existing, and the garage was built in nineteen-ten. And they are both pre-existing structures, but because of the change in use from the garage to the finished space, in speaking with Tom, that necess- that required zoning variance for the change of use. To the best of our knowledge, the garage has been utilized and was modified based on our inquiry and and review in nineteen-seventies, the early nineteen-seventies, and it was used as an accessory apartment up until, uh, previous to when we were entered into contract. They, it was illegal, it was never received the building permit, and we are not attempting to try to get a necessary apartment as part of this process. One of the conditions that Tom had is removing of the shower area. But Christine is a jewelry maker designer and she would love to be able to use the garage as her design studio with no retail environment there. And she does a lot of layouts for museums. And Christine, if you want to just explain what you do as a professional.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Chris Bamford. Uh, I've been a designer for over thirty years, had my masters, taught in colleges, had my own business for a really long time. At this point in time, what I do mostly is consulting for museums for display of objects, priceless objects. Everything is based in the city, but all my plans, blueprints, any kind of phone calls are all done in my studio. Need to have kind of spread out and use the space to be able to do that and also the jewelry design that I do and would love to use the building for that.
As a result of the meeting with, uh, Tom, it was clear that the improvements that were done by the predecessor needed to be addressed in some fashion to your board, understanding the conditions and five points of the balancing test. As a result, uh, we thought long and hard and took Tom's suggestions to heart and are requesting to do some deconstruction of the of items at the site. And I'd like to just show you what those are. As a result of the, um.
I'm sorry, could, Mr. Testa, could we just, out of the box.
Yes.
How many variances would you require before we, before we get to what what you're proposing you might do? To to make the property compliant?
Well, when I got the the four-page denial letter, that first getting over that shock was was a scenario that we had to address. But basically, a lot of these variants are based on the fact this is a corner lot, there's double standards between two streets, Elm Street and Ridgewood Terrace. It is pre-existing in Alcombe, so the buildings themselves have not changed at all.
Right.
But because of the change of use in the garage, my understanding is that triggered a requirement for a variance to the same structure all because it was a hu- a change from a garage to the, um, to the proposed studio, is what we're proposing.
Tom, do you want to? If the applicant showed up today and said, I want to make this property compliant and came before the zoning board, how many variances would they need?
I believe I have thirteen, which equates to about twenty-three. When you, there's some of the thirteen required, two or three.
Two, okay, okay.
So this was a record.
Yep, good.
As as a result of of that analysis, what we decided to do, if you look at the handout I just gave you.
Yes.
Um, we, there's a shed to the far right there. We decided to remove that shed in its entirety. Uh, and the areas you see in green are areas that are currently paved that we want to restore back to landscaping beds. The wooden deck, we're cutting off four feet of the wooden deck so that the debt will be substantially reduced there, as well as moving the steps flush with the building. And on the areas along the side, there's a walkway with a fire pit and everything else there, which is in green, which we are actually cutting that out and returning it back to grass. So we we're attempting to try to do some deconstruction to bring it into certain compliance. But again, it's stuff that has been there for a long ti- we don't know the exact dates of it, because the owners refused to talk to us, the previous owners. So as a result, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm suggesting that these have been here probably at a minimum of at least fifteen to twenty years, maybe more. As far as the usage of the site itself, it's a legal single-family dwelling, pre-existing, and we're not proposing to change that in any fashion. And certainly at this stage, I'd like to, if there's any feedback I could try to answer for you, I'd be glad to.
Where is the fire pit that you're?
The fire pit, sir, is.
I might get you to use this and I might make it easier and use it as a processor.
That's the fire pit. Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it. And and you're taking that out?
Yes, that's coming out. Oh, I see what you're saying.
And it'll come out boiled, if you want.
The fire pit is, uh, right there.
Thank you.
And we're, basically, we're taking out this structure here. All of this area here is coming out, the shed is coming out, the side area there, and the area over here, we're creating a planter in the corner, and this little area here. To and to try to improve it. There's also an area that is right in this area here, this patio, which, in speaking to Christine, we certainly have no objection to removing that if we had to and just putting some uh, little walkway pavers there to get to the deck and the and the shed. Because there's an electric line that is located underneath that needs to be repaired in the future that goes to the garage and it's an underground electric service, which is, uh, according to the electrician, needs to be upgraded and put down proper. So we will be removing the pavers in that area anyway.
How deep do they have to go for electrical?
Eighteen to twenty-four inches, yeah.
Could you help us understand?
By by doing that, Mr. Chairman, we actually re- eliminated the the, uh, building coverage variance. So that is now not a variance. And we also reduced the development coverage, uh, down to, uh, approximately nine hundred square feet over. So we're we're, we tried to substantially understand that. The area that we have right over here is really the only privacy that Christine has right in this area here. We'd love to try to keep this area here, uh, which is is pretty much because of the corner configuration, it's the only shielded area of the house.
Because there's another neighbor or the roadway?
There's the, two roadways. You have the, you have the Elm Street, Elm Street here, and then you got Ridgewood Terrace. And this area is is, there's a fence here, so it gives you a little privacy that is not able to be done on the other areas.
So how many, could you take us through the the structures that you hope to remain on the?
Yes.
Let let's put aside for a moment, patios, walkways, that kind of thing.
Okay.
What what's, could you take us through the the structures that you hope?
The struc- what you have here is a pre-existing, uh, the old garage, which we're trying to utilize that as a artist's studio. There's a, there's an architectural drawing in there for the reference in that. This is an existing shed, and by removing this shed, this will be the only storage area outside that she has, and we're requesting to keep that. The other is, this is the existing single-family residence, which is a one-story structure. There's an existing walkway that, and the pa- this is a paving area here with a with a three-foot walkway that goes to the deck, goes down here. And also from over here along the side, in this area, there's a little paver's right in here. And. Uh, and that's, there's a parking area right here that's pre-existing, non-conforming and not complying, but it's pre-existing. Uh, and again, this is all built for the early eighteen seventies, not nineteen-ten. My knowledge, there's has not been any complaints with the building department on this matter in terms of the issues. At the same time, also, I'd like to hand out, these are letters of support from the immediate neighbors. And putting them together for you. We went to uh one of the ones that we could get in that area, particularly the adjacent properties. And those are, there's a support, no violations, that they they feel they have no objections to the proposal. We've explained in detail what we are proposing to do. They seen all the plans that you see in front of you.
Can we just go back quickly to the uh building coverage, development coverage? Uh, one, which one is?
On on the previous, on the new or the or the old?
I'm not sure.
The the green one, the green, if you have the green one, that's
I'm just looking at the um the list of variance requests.
Oh.
Number twelve and number thirteen.
Mike yourself this year.
This usually don't need.
Right, one of them I know is eliminated. Right, I know one is reduced and one is left.
Which one?
So on uh number twelve and number thirteen, you have building coverage and development coverage. And you mentioned that one is reduced and one is eliminated. I just wanted to clarify your that.
We are eliminating building coverage. We are able to comply with the building coverage, but the development coverage, we have not yet, uh, we've reduced it drastically, but we have not been able to comply.
Thank you.
So I'm looking quickly, Michael. Your variance was originally was thirteen hundred eighty-four square feet on the development and with the reduction, you're looking for eight seventy-five now? Am I close enough?
Yes, you are. You're right in the, right, right.
Okay. So you so all you, so you you need eight hundred and seventy-five feet of variance?
Approximately, yes, sir. And again, we we really considered long and hard to eliminate the pavers on the side. But again, that's the only area where she's able to have some privacy on the site.
Excuse me if you've already covered this. The the wooden deck.
Yes.
What purpose does it serve?
The per- it's outs- uh, it it's right in the back of the, it goes out of the kitchen area. We, the kitchen area, it was where she was able to just go out on it. So it's a raised, it's about three feet off the ground. And what we did was, we cut, we cut this piece off here, four feet off. Made it four feet shorter and slid the chair, the stairs now flush with the edge of the building.
So having that eliminated, there isn't, there isn't, even though there's so much going on on this on this property, there isn't something that would replace it in terms of um outside space? Is that correct?
Not really, not not really.
Right, okay. And the shed, that's re- um, that you hope will remain. It, what purpose will it serve?
That's for just storage of lawnmower and things of that nature.
Okay. Is there a garage?
No. That's the, the existing detached accessory structure was a garage back in the early s- uh, from nineteen- nineteen-ten till about nineteen-seventy-four. And then it's no longer a garage. It's a, it's a finished area uh for the plan layout you see there.
Okay. So where's where's the driveway?
The driveway, sir, is this little area here. It's it's a, it's a little carved out pull-out right there. That goes back in, and that's been there since the early nineteen hundreds.
Is it these, the walkway that it gives you access to the house?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a, there's a side entrance, a front entrance, and another side entrance there.
And are all of those walkways necessary?
Well, we we've taken away ones we we feel that are are not necessary. There there area, this area right here is clearly from, it accesses the deck down to this paper area. We feel that's necessary. This area here, we we kept this, but we eliminated this area up here as well as here, and created this three-foot walkway to there. This area right here, we certainly can get rid of that. I spoke with Christine before. That's the area where the new electric line is gonna be going, and we could actually eliminate the pavers in there in the in the entirety there and just put some paving stones, just like walkway stones going to the gr- going to the steps here and to the shed. I believe that was accurate, right, Christine? We certainly are are amenable to that, no problem at all. Which is getting us really close to complying with the development coverage if we would eliminate that.
Right. So I know you've given us this letter. Where are the neighbors in relationship to this parcel?
You mean geographically or where they, there as far as how they feel about this?
No, I'm sorry.
Geograph.
Geographically, yes.
Okay, so um, it's a corner lot.
Yes.
So the uh Justin and Carla, who wrote the letter from thirty-five Ridgewood Terrace, share the long border in between the two, fence separating the two properties. And then there's another building, there are two buildings behind. It's a house for sale. It was always a rental, and I don't think the owners live in town, so I couldn't even speak with them about about this.
Okay. The reason I ask is it's it's not specific to you so much as whatever our conclusion is here will run with the land and continue.
The normal uh course of action would have been the previous owner would have been before your board. Um, before she took ownership of it. But that was not allowed us to do that.
And and how is it that the title company didn't raise red flags that?
When you, when you do a title search in a municipality, it just researches the current record in the file. So it's gonna come up with no violations because it's pre-existing.
Right.
So they got that and they ran with that. However, you know, we decided we need to get Tom out there. And Tom is the definitive, you know, voice on this. And clearly, it was more than just what the owner said. You know, there was issues that we raised, and we immediately, you know, tried to address Tom's concerns.
Right, okay.
And we were, they, we were given an op- we weren't given the opportunity to either back out of the, it was either you buy it or 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 you lose it.
Understood.
And she currently lives, lived in Pleasantville and was losing her lease that she had in Pleasantville.
I see, okay.
And she lives here with her son.
Tom, to put you on the spot, in, are there any opportunities for other eliminations, reductions um that are obvious to you that um we may be missing here in in our discussion?
To be honest, I think they took out more than I thought they would. So I I think they've done a fine job with removing, like, scape.
Okay. So you said you thought you could make this one change that?
We we could, sir. I can just show you right here.
Yep, yep.
If we were to have some pa- pavers that went somewhere like this, we could take out all of this area in here.
Right.
Up to this point right here.
Okay.
I didn't calculate that out, but I certainly can do the calculation for you.
Right, okay.
And again, we we are gonna be removing that anyway to get access to create new a new electrical feed to the to the detached structure.
Right. So George, if if the applicant makes this change, um I'm supposing we would, we would want the applicant to return next month to us with?
Yeah, to to that extent, because I've never seen an application of twenty-three variance requests. Um, I think it would be best to have this cleaned up, even if it's just like this, this green plan. Um, but just so that then, Tom, you can go back and make sure we're getting the right variances. We don't wanna grab variances that aren't needed, and we don't wanna skip over variances that aren't needed. Um, I think the cleanest way, you know, me looking quickly through this, I I know it gets rid of several variances, which is great. But it it's the safest and cleanest way is to come back next month, give us some time to look over this, make sure we're hitting everything we need to hit, and it's done again right from the beginning.
And then Tom would reissue a new denial letter that would be updated with the the current circumstance.
And that would encourage obviously communication between parties just so everyone's aware, uh, you know, everyone's on the same page here.
Okay. There's clearly no one in the room to be heard on this matter. Is there anyone on the screen to be heard on this matter? Anyone with a hand raised? Okay, thank you. Is there anything we haven't covered that uh we should?
No, no.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion that we um leave this matter open, carry it over to next month. Uh, the applicant return. Speak to the uh building department in the interim, update uh their plans. Uh, the building department will um also detail the the variances, the revised variances uh that will be necessary for the board to consider.
And the only additional thing I would ask is, um, like these letters and stuff that came in, whatever else you have, if we could just submit it so that we have it a hundred percent for the record, could be uploaded online.
We'll re-submit the letters as part of the record.
Yeah, yeah, anything, any new submission, whatever you gave us tonight in terms of the drawing, or if you have a revised drawing, whatever it is, or the letters or anything else, just re-submit so that we have it for the record.
Tom is the is the scalable version that you see there, uh, revised to reflect the changes. Uh, something you could, I guess?
We can start working on that. I will contact you if we can.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to carry this over.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giardina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jendzak.
Right, thank you.
I make a motion in board of meeting minutes for the April twenty-sixth meeting.
I'll second their motion.
Chairman Ken Cooper.
Aye.
Tony Giardina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Jendzak.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you. Okay, we're off.